Our 6.6, Public Hearing Regarding A B 481, California Government Code 7070-7075, Military Equipment Use Presentation and Adoption of Sheriff's Office Military Equipment Use Policy. And with that, we'll invite the sheriff up. So this is just a public hearing? Is there action that we have to take today now? Okay.
Good morning. Okay, this is on. Good morning, Board. My name is Sheriff Brian Martin. We are here for a presentation, a public hearing, on military equipment use policy for the sheriff's office. The presentation is going to be made by Lieutenant Luke Bingham today. I want to give you a bit of a warning. Luke got woken up very early this morning at 2:00 a.m. to respond to a call where oddly enough, we had to deploy some of our military equipment. Thankfully, we didn't have to use it, but it seemed fairly appropriate that that were to happen today. So today's presentation, Lieutenant Bingham will discuss the legislation that led up to this requirement. And at the end of the presentation, we'll talk about what steps are necessary from the Board of Supervisors in the sheriff's office. Thank you.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, LT.
So A B 841 was signed into law by Governor Newsom on January, or excuse me, September 30th, 2021, and it took effect on January 1 of 2022. A B 481 states stated goals are to provide legal enforceable safeguards to the protection of the public, welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties before military equipment can be used, funded, or acquired and/or used. Section 7071 requires each law enforcement agency to obtain approval of the applicable governing body by adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance at a regular meeting prior to taking any action relating to the funding, acquisition, use, or collaboration with agencies in the use of military equipment. Section 7071 also requires approval of the board for the continued use of military equipment acquired prior to January 1 of 2022. So this presentation will cover equipment currently possessed by the sheriff's office, which meets the definition of military equipment per A B 481, and allows the sheriff's office and will allow the sheriff's office to answer any questions the board or the community may have prior to drafting an ordinance and adoption of the sheriff's office military equipment policy. So currently, the equipment used in the Lake County Sheriff's Office or possessed by the Lake County Sheriff's Office. So vehicles, first is the sheriff's office Crisis Response Unit van. This van was obtained in 2007 at a cost of just over $65,000. It has been used by the sheriff's office since 2007 to current date, and actually was used last night. Annual maintenance costs are just over $8,000 for this vehicle. This vehicle was obtained from the South Lake County Fire District as an ambulance, and it was repurposed as a vehicle to transport Crisis Response Unit team members, their equipment, and to act as an incident command post during Crisis Response Unit incidents. Next is the LAV 150 light armored vehicle. This vehicle was obtained from the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office in 2014. It was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 2015. It was no cost to the sheriff's office. It was given to us by the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. It has been in utilization since 2015 until today's date. The annual maintenance costs since 2014 is just over or just under $17,000 for this vehicle. It's used by the Crisis Response Unit as a citizen rescue vehicle, a deputy rescue vehicle, and utilized during crisis response incidents for deputy protection and the safe deployment of Crisis Response Unit equipment and breaching of reinforced structures. Sheriff's Office Emergency Operations Center. This was obtained in 2006 via OES grant funding. The initial cost was just under $230,000. The maintenance cost since 2006 has been just under $11,000, and it is normally deployed at pre-planned events and emergencies such as wildfires or critical incidents. Some of you may have seen it at the last fire we had down in Middletown as the operations command post for that incident. Robots and unmanned aircraft. Irobot Model 510 is a tactical surveillance robot. Sheriff's Office has one of these. It was obtained from the 1033 program in 2017, and the annual maintenance cost for that since it's, since 2017 has been $700 for replacement of batteries. Its use is restricted to the Crisis Response Unit. The robot has two cameras, lights, a grasping arm, and a microphone. It's very versatile and is used to reduce the risk to deputies during dangerous incidents. The robot has been deployed twice, once during a barricaded subject to incident who had shot at officers, and once during a high-risk search warrant service of an armed and dangerous person. Just some more information on it. Next is a MACbot. We have one of these, and again, it was attained, obtained from the 1033 program in 2015, and its annual maintenance cost since that time has been $700 for replacement of batteries. This is utilized in the same manner as our tracked robot, the Irobot 1510, and again, is restricted use to the Crisis Response Unit. Small unmanned aircraft systems. Currently, the sheriff's office does not have any unmanned aerial systems. We are looking into this and actively researching information on the applicability of these and applicable law as to the use of these. However, based on our research thus far, they are very appropriate for us, especially for crime scene reconstruction, disaster response, search and rescue, and then officer safety of critical incidents. It provides great detail and information. Rather than having to send deputies into harm's way or into positions that would risk them injury or death, we can provide, we can deploy this unit or a unit that we decide in the future, which will give us that intelligence and overall look prior to having to go into that area. And again, we don't currently have any of these in inventory. Distraction devices. These are devices that emit a bright light and loud sound. They're used to momentarily distract suspects and volatile individuals for hostage rescues or apprehension of dangerous individuals. They are ATF-controlled Class C explosives, and they emit a bright light and a thunderous noise. Currently, the sheriff's office deploys two models of these, the CTS 7290 and the CTS 7290 Mini. Currently, we have 46 distraction devices in our inventory. They do have a lifespan of, I believe, approximately five years before they expire, and the cost per unit is $34.81 and $37.51 respectively. They are highly controlled and restricted, and they are only used by certified Crisis Response Unit members. They are kept in a secure facility that is alarmed in an ATF-approved magazine. Chemical munitions. Again, these are used to disorient, distract potentially dangerous individuals, allowing for a safe apprehension. First is the CTS 6340 OC and the CTS 5230B baffled riot CS canisters. Both of these are used by the Corrections Special Emergency Response Team and the Sheriff's Crisis Response Unit. Currently, we have nine of them. They expire after five years, so the 6340 OC will expire in 2026. And then we have 56 of the 5230Bs. 14 of them are currently expired and used for training purposes only. 18, 24 of them were purchased in 2018 and will expire next year, and 12 of them will expire in 2026. And they are each a cost per unit of $36.61. These three canisters are deployed and used by the Correctional Facility Special Emergency Response Team, the DEFTEC 120s, the 180s, and the 5230s. These both are used in the Correctional Facility. Currently, we have a quantity of three of the 1020s that will expire next year. We have six of the 1080s that will expire next year, and then we have seven of the 5230s that will expire in 2026. We have three of the CTS 5231s that the CERT team uses in the Correctional Facility that will expire in 2026. And then we have 10 of the, yes, you want to play term on that one, but of the smaller 8230 tactical smoke canisters. We have 10 of those, which are used by the Crisis Response Unit. Six of them are currently expired and used for training purposes only, and four of them will expire in 2023. And then of the 5230s, we have 11, and again, six of them are expired for training purposes only, and five of them will expire in 2026. The ones that we retain for training purposes only due to the cost per unit and the annual training that is required for both the CERT team and the Crisis Response Unit, we keep the expired ones for training purposes only for deployment and instructing members on how to use them and properly deploy them rather than deploying unexpired rounds or unexpired canisters because of the cost. This is a Smith &amp; Wesson canister launcher. This device is attached to a standard shotgun and uses a 12-gauge launching cartridge to deploy those canister rounds into structures from a distance, providing safety for the deputies and the officers that are deploying those rounds. These are what are commonly referred to as barricade rounds, but they are 40-millimeter projectiles. They are chemical munition deployment rounds, and they are used for deployments when there are barriers in the way that canisters cannot be deployed into a structure. These are used to be deployed into the structure through windows or soft corridors. Currently, we have six of the 4340s, 17 of the 4330s, and four of the 4630s, and the costs per units are listed there. These are restricted to use by the Crisis Response Unit only and only by trained members. This is a DEFTEC 1090, commonly referred to as a sting ball. This is used in the Correctional Facility for dealing with riots or riotous-type situations. These emit a bright light and a loud noise similar to a flashbang or a distractionary device, and they disperse small rubber pellets. Currently, we have 10 of those, and they expire after five years, and they will expire by the end of this year. They'll be expired at a cost per unit of 5250. Currently, only Correctional CERT members are certified to deploy these and only under the approval of a supervisor. CTS 9594 is an OC. It's similar to the 1090. It emits a bright light, sound, rubber pellet, and it also disperses OC powder. So you have the chemical irritant that's dispersed also. We currently have 12 of these that will expire in 2026 at a cost of $43.68 each. And again, they are restricted to CERT team members, certified CERT team members, and a authorized, deployment must be authorized by a supervisor. This is a FN 303. The sheriff's office currently has two of these at a cost of $1,299 each. Correction, they have two of them. At a cost of $1,299 each. These are gas-operated or air-operated devices that deploy a less-than-lethal round that has a chemical munition, a small amount of OC powder inside of them. They're used for distraction and pain compliance for violent subjects inside the Correctional Facility. They are only used by the Correctional Facility and by the CERT team inside the Correctional Facility. This is the FN 303 round, which the FN 303 deploys. We currently have 225 of them. They expire three years from the date of manufacture. We have 333 of them that are expired and used for training purposes only and recertification purposes. All of the aforementioned items, robots, distraction devices, and chemical munitions are strictly controlled, used, trained with by the Lake County Sheriff's Office Crisis Response Unit and the Corrections Special Emergency Response Team. They are stored and climate-controlled in alarmed rooms. The equipment that is held by the Crisis Response Unit is in a facility that has a perimeter fence. It is 24-hour video surveillance and alarmed, and only Crisis Response Unit members have access to the room. And the deployment of any of those equipment must be authorized by the Crisis Response Unit commander or sheriff. Access to chemical munitions and equipment at the Correctional Facility is limited to the CERT team, and the deployment and use of those chemical munitions, equipment, and the FN 303 is approved, has to be approved by the CERT team commander, the Correctional Facility commander, or the sheriff. The extended-range kinetic energy projectiles, these are commonly referred to as less-lethal munitions, and they're used to distract through pain compliance with a reduced potential for causing death or seriously injure when used. First is the Armor Holdings 40-millimeter launcher. This is also what we talked about earlier, the barricade rounds, the chemical barricade rounds. This is the launcher that is used to deploy those in the structures. Sheriff's Office currently has four of these at a cost of $998 each. They were obtained in 2005. These are the rounds that the 40-millimeter launcher launches, the projectile less-than-lethal rounds. We currently have four of the 6325s and 221 of the 4557s, 10 of which are expired and used for training purposes only. The use of this platform and the use of these rounds is restricted to CERT team members, Crisis Response Team members, and trained and certified supervisors. Training to use this platform and these kinetic energy platforms is an eight-hour less-than-lethal course and annual department recertification, training, and qualification. This is a Remington 870 less-than-lethal platform. This is basically a 12-gauge shotgun that was converted in 2005 to be a less-lethal platform. It is issued and trained, it is issued to train and qualified patrol deputies. It is also at the Correctional Facility and its secured armory, and it is deployable in the Correctional setting by trained and qualified Correctional deputies. Again, this also requires an eight-hour less-than-lethal certification course and annual department recertification training and qualification. This is CTS 2581 kinetic energy munition. This is what the previous platform launches. We have 1,623 of these. They expire five years from the date of manufacture, which is 2020, so they'll be expired in 2025, and at a cost of $4.55 each. These are standard issue for patrol and corrections. All listed equipment that we just spoke about is governed by Sheriff's Office Policy and California Penal Code. Sheriff's Office Policy, 300 use of force, 308 controlled device techniques, special purpose vehicles, custody use of force, and then California Penal Code 835A, use of reasonable force, and then 836, arrest by a peace officer. There are also a few applicable federal laws that are governed. Distraction devices, as I spoke, they are ATF-controlled devices. And then any complaints pertaining to deployment of the aforementioned equipment are received and investigated per Lake County Sheriff's Office Policy 1019 Complaints. So the following equipment is not currently utilized by the sheriff's office and is retained for training purposes only. This is an M113 tracked armored vehicle. This was obtained by the sheriff's office in 1996. It was assigned to the Sheriff's Office Crisis Response Unit. It was trained with, but it was never deployed in that time. The sheriff's office is currently looking to dispose of this vehicle in a lawful manner, which could include recycling a scrap metal or permanently disabling the 113 for display. This is the LAV 150 light armored vehicle. This is similar to the current operational vehicle that we have. This was obtained by the sheriff's office in 2002 from the 1033 program, and was not made operational due to the cost and has been used for parts since obtaining the operational LAV from the Sonoma County Sheriff's Office. We're also looking at disposing of this vehicle in the same manner as the M113. This is a 37-millimeter federal laboratories launching platform. This was used by the Crisis Response Unit. It has since been taken out of inventory since obtaining the 40-millimeter launching systems. We currently have one of these at a cost of $90. It was obtained in 1995. It is not currently deployed. It is stored in the Crisis Response Unit locker and is restricted to use by the Crisis Response Unit team for training purposes only. This is a 37-millimeter Defense Technologies Model 1315. Again, we only have one of these at a cost of $90. It was obtained in 2000 and has been replaced by the current 40 millimeters. And again, it is restricted to Crisis Response Unit members for training purposes only and kept in the secure locker. This is a 40-millimeter DEFTEC 1290 barricade round, similar to those that we spoke about earlier. And then on the right is the FN 303 impact projectile. Both of these rounds are expired, and they are retained for training purposes only due to the cost of new rounds. We keep the expired rounds so we can train and qualify our deputies and Correctional deputies. Similar to the previous slide, this is a Defense Technologies Drag Stabilized 12-gauge less-lethal round. We currently have 523 of these. They are all expired, and again, we keep them for training and qualification purposes. This is a Colt 9mm 63, 635 9mm submachine gun. We currently have six of these at a cost of $780. They were purchased in 2000. They were utilized by the Crisis Response Unit but have since been replaced and no longer used. We keep these for training purposes only. They are kept in the sheriff's office armory and use, and access to them is restricted to firearms instructors for training purposes only. This is a Colt M16A2 Commando. This was purchased or purchased by the sheriff's office in 1998. We have one of these. Cost was $778. And again, it is no longer used by the sheriff's office for any purpose other than training, and access, again, is restricted to firearms instructors. Penal Code Section 34005B and Section 16580 allows the sheriff's office to retain seized weapons rather than destroying them for official law enforcement purposes. The following weapons were retained by the sheriff's office for those purposes. This is an auto ordnance 1927A1 Thompson rifle. Again, it was retained by the sheriff's office for training purposes only, and its access and use is restricted to firearms instructors for training purposes. This is a STEN 9mm submachine gun. We have one of these, and it was retained by the sheriff's office for training purposes, and access, again, is restricted to firearms instructors. This is an AK-47 tactical pistol that was retained by the sheriff's office and used for instruction and training purposes, and again, restricted to firearms instructors. And then lastly, is a 1951 Russian SKS that was retained by the sheriff's office for training purposes, and again, its access is restricted to firearms instructors. And that is the end of the presentation of all of the equipment that is utilized by the sheriff's office or in possession of the sheriff's office that was deemed military equipment by A B 481.
West Chair Scott?
I do have a question for your last slides. I know we've received a lot of public input and concern about this when they see military equipment being used in our police force. So those last slides you showed of the guns, you said they were obtained. Could you explain a little bit further how they were obtained and where they were obtained?
Those were, without speaking too many individually, but those are typically evidence guns that are seized over the course of investigation. We'll come across firearms like that right here in Lake County and seize them. The reason we keep them, as you said, was for training purposes. Typically, those aren't the type of firearms that law enforcement officers receive instruction on during the course of their academy, but it's good to have them for ongoing training in the event that they do encounter them. Obviously, some deputy had to encounter that at some point during his career, and those are just the ones that we've kept. That does not represent all the illegal firearms that we've seized, and the ability to train our deputies so that they can safely disarm them and safely handle them is provided by the training opportunities by having those firearms.
I appreciate that, because I think our public needs to fully understand what our deputies are coming across in our community, in our community right here in Lake County, not in the communities outside. I know we always think it's not going to happen here, but this equipment's already here. And I appreciate the presentation. I support you on this. I think we definitely need to have the tools in place to be able to protect the community and our deputies doing the work. I know there's a concern when, again, military equipment, that this is going to be used every day, that we're going to see this. It's not, to only use when needed. How often do you think that we pull out, that the CERT team, how often are they out with this equipment?
The presentation included the numbers. Unfortunately, it's out of date as of today because, as I said, we did deploy it today. But it's fairly rare, as you'll see from those numbers. This is one of those things where I would equate having this equipment as very similar to having insurance. Nobody likes to have insurance, but when you need it, you're really glad you do have it. So the deployment, and one thing I want to touch on too, when we talk about the CRU, the Crisis Response Unit, a lot of agencies might refer that to different things, but they might call it a SWAT team, a hostage negotiation team. But it's the team of highly specialized people that not only respond to these tactical situations, but also a portion of that team is involved in negotiations where we try to de-escalate, talk people out of any situation that would result in violence. It does seem to be becoming a more frequent deployment over the last couple of years. It seems that society is becoming increasingly more violent and dangerous. But as far as, it's nothing that happens on a daily basis, I would say. But we do, in addition to the unincorporated areas, we also provide services to our incorporated cities, and we've had several calls within those jurisdictions as well. But the deployment amounts are included in the presentation. I can't remember, it was about 16 now with the light armored vehicle, which is deployed in the most dangerous of situations.
I appreciate that explanation. And there was also concern that if we approve this, then they will give you full range to be able to go do whatever you want with the funding and be able to bring in military equipment. So how will that work? If you want to go buy a piece of equipment, what will you need to do if it's a military piece of equipment?
Absolutely. The policy, should it be accepted, and the ordinance, should it be passed by the Board of Supervisors, require the sheriff to return to the Board of Supervisors with any request for future equipment purchases. Future equipment purchases could simply include replenishing the ordinance that's set to expire. As indicated in the presentation, an unmanned aerial system platform, we don't have, but we want to include that in the platform. We would be required to come to the Board of Supervisors and request approval for that. And it also require the Board of Supervisors to accept our policy, which is, I'm all for transparency. We put it out there, which outlines the situations under which it can be deployed. Certainly, I don't want to live in an area where we have tanks running down the roads, and we don't live in that area, and I want to keep it that way. But we also live in an area where we're quite remote from other agencies and other resources, and we have an expectation and we have an expectation that law enforcement respond to these dangerous situations and handle them in the best way possible. And I want, this is, this is important for me because I want to make sure that every time we go to one of these situations, we send our men and women in uniform home alive at the end of it.
I appreciate that explanation. So this will not be the last time public will have input when the sheriff goes to purchase another piece of equipment. So it's open and we'll be transparent about this, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
I appreciate the conversation. I also, I can understand why a bill like this was passed to create transparency. At the same time, I have concerns about the level of transparency because now we know exactly what is, what we have and where. So my question to you is, and I'm certain I know the answer, but it's a concern, what is this, how, I guess I don't want the details, but I have concerns of the security levels and if there's any need to increase the security levels to make sure that that equipment is held secure from anyone other than the CERT team that should have access to that.
I'm very confident in the security of the location as Lieutenant Bingham indicated in his presentation. Storage of certain of those devices requires ATF approval, and those devices are held in a facility that's been approved by the Bureau of ATF.
How often do they do a security check?
It's random.
Okay, good.
It's not on a quarterly or yearly or bi-yearly. It's random. They just do, whenever they decide they want to do an inspection, they'll contact us and they'll come up.
Right. And it is unfortunate. We unfortunately hear about it, it seems, on a weekly basis of the power that is held within the hands of our residents and the misuse of that power. And to not have the ability for our law enforcement to be able to protect our communities against that power, I think it's just, it's a necessary thing for us to make sure that we can protect our communities as well as what you stated, protect our law enforcement officers as well from harms away. I do have one last question. Expired, can you tell me exactly what happens with munitions that are expired? Are they less capable of doing the job that they're created for? Are they, like, what exactly happens to the munitions when they expire?
Well, when you're talking to chemical munitions, it's the degradation.
Close.
He's been up since two. I think that was since two. Of the chemicals themselves, so they're less effective. So we will rotate those to a training once they expire so that we can continue with the, I think it's, we do quarterly trains and qualifications with all of our team members to ensure the deployment and the proper deployment of these. So basically, the chemicals are less effective than an unexpired chemical munition. When it comes to the less lethal platforms, they have a tendency to degrade to the point where they're no longer flight stable, no longer as accurate as they're supposed to be, or have a potential to come apart during deployment. So those are rotated out for the safety of the community and the deployment officers.
Appreciate that.
Vice Chair Scott?
So the public can fully understand the Sheriff's Department and everything that goes on in there. Are you going to be bringing back your Sheriff's Citizens Academy? Because I think that was an awesome program to fully understand the operations of the Sheriff's Department, being able to go in there. I don't know if anybody else on this board has done that, but it's an awesome opportunity.
We're certainly exploring options to do that. We're, like many departments, we're struggling with staffing challenges, but I fully agree with you. I wish we get enough participation. I think the last time we tried to put a Citizens Academy together, I think we only had six or seven people express interest and we ended up canceling because of that. But with your support and encouragement, maybe we can get enough people in there to fill a class.
It was fun. It was a lot of fun.
I think we want, to make it worthwhile, I think we're looking for a minimum of 15.
I enjoyed it.
I could help recruit that. Supervisor Sabatier answered a lot of the questions that I had, so I do have one more, but Supervisor Simon, go ahead.
Yeah, so obviously, I'd support you guys moving forward with this, and transparency is real important. There is, I would just make, you know, just one comment of everything reading through here, obviously, all parts of the jobs and everything, but, you know, I just need to make the statement about water cannons. And I know they're utilized in different areas, but, you know, for me, coming from a minority group and other things, water cannons during the civil rights fights and other things were used in manners that I'd rather not us carry that on here in Lake County, you know. So obviously, in support of it, but water cannons, to me, brings us right back to the civil rights fights and other things like that that happen here in this country to minorities and, you know, ultimately, you know, not saying that's what we do here, but carrying that on and that thing, it just jumps out to me. So I need to make the statement on that, and I don't know if you guys have ever deployed it, but it was just in the overall uses or nonuses. It says tasers, shockwave, microwave weapons, water cannons, long-range devices. So I just need to make that statement on water cannons.
So the inclusion of water cannon was probably included in the legislation. We don't have water cannons, and I have no intention of acquiring or deploying water cannons. I hear you loud and clear.
Yeah, just wanted to make that statement. But in support, obviously, support you guys, and you said the statement number one, making sure our law enforcement come home safely. And that's, I want to make sure we always have that support, but I needed to make that statement on the water cannons.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No, I appreciate this presentation. I appreciate the transparency, and it's so important to make sure that all of our law enforcement are safe on the job. Really appreciate you for coming up to my neighborhood in the middle of the night, keeping everybody safe. That's all I have.
Yeah. No, this in presentation, I know it's, of course mandated by the, you know, AB4081. I, you know, I think it's important, and I'm just going to state this for the record, that I don't know, you know, what we can do next time things like this come forward. We have to do a better job of explaining things like, we shouldn't have the number of rounds. And the reason I say this is because I know criminals, and when they get out, sometimes they get out to go back in or to work for people that are in. We have high-level criminals in our jail right now because of the prison system, and so for me, I know they're keen. I know that. And so for me, this is good that we're transparent this way, but at the same time, are we not giving everything that we have to the people that want to do harm or do things in jail? And I just say that because I know that type of mentality, being in the service and things of that nature. I do appreciate that you use a lot of the expired rounds and whatnot for training because that's commonly, you know, that's a good thing, and I'm glad to hear that because I was like, what do you do, recycle them or do you just shoot them or, you know, like, and then also seizing or holding on to the equipment that's, that you're not already given because you have to know how to dismantle it when you're in a situation. You have to know how to ensure that it's empty or whatever the case may be for other people's safety. So I'm glad to see that a lot of that is explained. Also, the statement of supervisors have to be given, and when you say supervisor, you're meaning supervisors in your department, not us. So supervisors have to be given authority for you to be able to use some of it. So it's very important. And I say that too because there are some people in our communities that would say, oh, so all he has to do is ask, I mean, there is people that would say that, but I'm glad that there's a lot of measures, there's a lot of statements that say only in this environment we would use it or in a crisis and things of that nature, so. And there's plans to dispose of some of the outdated things. I think that's important too.
I'm anticipating there'll be some public input on this. I believe the next steps are, should the board approve the policy? The next step would be to pass a resolution. There's a timeframe in which that's going to occur?
Remember, 180 days from the start of the presentation, which was on May 1st, when we first notified the board of this presentation. We have 180 days from May 1st to draft an ordinance that accepts the Sheriff's Office Military Equipment Policy.
And by all means, given the timeframe there, we're certainly not in a rush to have that ordinance passed. So with board direction, we will come back at a subsequent time. They'll also allow adequate time. I'm sure there's members of the community that are going to have some input for the Board of Supervisors that may not have made it today, and that period of time will allow that to happen, but we can certainly set this for a later date for acceptance of a resolution.
I think too, one of the questions I didn't get to ask, got on the soapbox, sorry, was this SUAS, and I know that you're probably looking to get one of those, would that be available for cannabis situations as well?
It would be available for a variety of things. Available for, if another agency would need to use it for cannabis enforcement, certainly. There are certain rules when you're using it in a law enforcement capacity in investigations that have to be followed. I'm not super clear on what all those rules are, but it's got a variety of applications. It can be compliance issues, it can be crime scene documentation, it can be search and rescue efforts, it could be disaster assessments after a disaster, whether it be a fire or a flood. There's, the possibilities are, there's a lot of possibilities available for that type of system.
Thanks. All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just wanted to, two things. One, just remind everybody of the enhanced accountabilities that have been put into place, the body cameras, things like that. Those are still in play as well, so while we might talk about equipment that for some people might be a sensitive subject, that there is still that elevated accountability that comes into play. And also, the annual report, are you, I really appreciated the annual report that you provided to us just a few weeks ago. Is it going to be a part of that report or will be a separate report because of the bill requiring a separate report or can it be put all together in one? Because it would be interesting just kind of be able to look at all the stats together in one area.
I think you read my mind because I think that's, it should be a part of our annual report, and that would, there's not a statutory requirement, I believe, for just a general annual report, but this creates a statutory requirement for an annual report related to this, so it's a great time just to incorporate it within an overall annual report for the Sheriff's Office. I'd give that consideration as well, so I believe it's very likely that it will.
So like, let's say hypothetically, if you have to use some of these rounds, like, for a specific reason, would you be able to reorder more? Do you need to go through us to order more? How does that work?
We would have to come back to you for authorization prior to reordering more.
Okay, so, okay. And that's kind of why I made the statement before, because if I'm in and out and I realize and I tell people, well, after 10 riots, you know, what happens then? You see, so, okay, that's why, anyhow. Anyone from the public want to comment on this?
Let's not have one.
Thank you, Brad Rasmussen, Lakeport Police Chief. I just wanted to speak briefly. We had to go through the same process with our city council. Ours is already approved. We do have an interest in seeing the board approve the sheriff's policy, not only because we support them and what they have to do in the county, but if we were to have a tactical situation in the city, we don't have a SWAT team, a crisis response team, or anything like that. So we would rely on a mutual aid request to the sheriff to come in and assist us with that, and for him to be able to use that equipment and effectively help us, this would have to be approved. So we have an interest in that. We support their policy. It's very similar to ours. It's just that they have a higher level of equipment than we maintain, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anyone else in the chambers? All right, I seen a hand online. I know also, it was Betsy, and I know she has a public comment in the ecomments. Oh, there she goes.
Thank you, Supervisor Crandall, and I have two questions, if I may. I'd be very interested to know how many riots we have actually had in our jail that have required this level of response, and how many situations in which law enforcement officers have had to deploy some of these, you know, larger pieces of equipment? I understand the riot guns and all that kind of stuff, but the big pieces of equipment. I also appreciate Chief Rasmussen's, you know, understanding of the level of service and the care that the Sheriff's Department provides. I believe the bill is very valuable. Of course, I am an anti-war activist and I do not like having tanks or, you know, the idea that we have the possibility of ordering missiles, you know, that kind of thing. There's enough war going on on the planet right now that we don't need to have that, but how much are we really using and what's the experience of the Sheriff's Department that warrants this?
Thank you for the questions. So we haven't had any riots within the jail. I believe some of the equipment's been used in situations where maybe it had some small fights or some violently combative inmates that don't want to move out of their cells for whatever reason. As far as the deployment of the other equipment, it's included in the presentation. We're fortunate that we haven't had large-scale riots in the community, but there's been several dozen times where I've encountered situations in my term as a sheriff where something has never happened here before, but, you know, we've had it happen. Everything from active shooters to cascading disasters. So the possibility of ordering missiles doesn't exist. I don't think we're going to be getting any missiles in the interim. I hope that answers the question.
All right. Is there anyone else with public input online? And I don't see any, so I'll close public input and bring it back to the board and Vice Chair Scott.
I just wanted to make a comment that the sheriff pointed out that we haven't had any major riots in our community, and I would have to say that's because our sheriffs and our police force are out and about when they feel that there might be an issue. I know that there's been some protests the last couple of years, and they come out just to make sure that the public is safe. I know for myself, I've been on Main Street here, and the chief has come out just to make sure that things are safe for not just the people that are protesting, but the streets. And so I really appreciate the fact that we're proactive. We go out there if we think there might be an issue to make sure that there's not an issue.
I think too, I just wanted to add, I know that tanks was mentioned, but these are lighted armored vehicles. They're to protect from rounds. I know a couple others had, you know, the availability to deter 50 caliber, and we can't determine what citizens have or people, criminals, or whoever has. So these type of, this isn't a tank, and I know sometimes civilians, they mistake some of these vehicles for tanks and whatnot. Like, you're not asking for a Paladin or a Howitzer or anything like that, and if you were, I'm pretty sure we'd be like, why do you need artillery or anything like that? But these, I see, are necessary for specific situations, and so I just wanted to highlight that.
Right, and the one piece of equipment, the M113, looks like a tank. It's a big metal box with tracked wheels on it, and we have been trying to get rid of that. It turns out, it's a little bit more difficult to get rid of it than simply putting it on Craigslist. So we're exploring options on that. It took quite a bit of time to actually track down the paperwork from the Department of Defense. It's been here for so long that I'm sure the paperwork's been purged, locked away, put in some archive somewhere at the federal government. It's not very important to them. We were able to finally track down our paperwork here, and we do have an interest in getting rid of it, whether it's to, as was stated in the presentation, put it out for scrap metal or disable it and make it a display somewhere along the way. But getting rid of some of that stuff is, proves its own unique challenges.
You could just put UN on the side of it because that's what the
We could. Put it up for public auction. I don't think that would be the idea.
All right. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you for the presentation. I don't know if there's anything else we have to go over on this, but.
I don't think so. If the board wants to give either direction or indication on when they might like to see this brought back for reading of the resolution.
Any ideas?
Within the 180 days that you have, please.
Within the next week or the next couple of months? How are we? Happy to do whatever.
Couple of months? We'll say a couple of months.
Okay, all right. We'll get something on future agenda. Thank you for your support. I appreciate the time for the presentation. I want to thank Lieutenant Bingham for putting this together. He put in a lot of hard work and then got, as I said, he got called out at 2:00 this morning, so it was exceptionally a long day for him. Thank you.
Thank you.